Approximately 6:06 for the work session. So I guess the first item is the Historic Review Board Work Plan.
If you recall, at last month's work session, I came up with a potential list of goals for our work plan for 2011 and also 2012, kind of knowing that some of these work plan items may fall into lead into next year. And we're trying to work a little harder in the city to thinking more should we do each year? Think about short-term or long-term goals. What I have here is a list of different projects that were brought up at the meeting last February. And what I'd like to tonight is a discussion of these items, anything that you want to add? Anything you want to take away and kind of the priority of the items? And then the goal is at this work session kind of to adopt the recommended work plan items for next year. And then maybe you want to even have long-term goals of 2012 as well. Short and short, long-term. So I'll just briefly recap. The first one was, as we do every year, Preservation Award and Preservation Month in May. Do we want to do an educational promotional event? To the Historic Citywide Survey, which is going January through August of this year. So the first phase, we are finishing up, which is the inventorying and the final report, which will be in June. What will happen this summer will be the moving forward with any designations to the, as landmarks, are any additional buildings designated, which will happen through the summer. Next is applying for Metro Enhancement Grant Monies for our local Preservation Grant Program, 50/50 Match. My goal this year is to kind of do the large application that really talks about the green aspect of our program with window repair, really tying in preservation and green and really just giving them the whole dog and pony show and hoping that they kind of keep us on. And if we see if the Metro Enhancement Committee rejects our application after we've put together a whole dog and pony show of why this is more than just helping historic property owners with their windows, which even some people can see as a very narrow program how it over, has a large overarching city policy being that, that isn't granted, then we will have to recant and decide how we want to find funds for that program. The next, John had asked for, think about doing a window workshop where actually the repair specialists come in and kind of talk about what they do, what they don't do, what they specialize in to give a little more expertise, understanding of what we're approving when we see these bids. There is a education on SASH limiters, this role brought that up. And in general, maybe a discussion with the Building Division and maybe the Building Official Education on issues that may affect historic preservation. And then we had some policy discussions, color regulation. Do we look at regulating colors? Do we want to do, I can do a literature search or a larger politics search to see what other landmarks commissions do in regards to colors, both in Oregon and outside. Mr. Edgar brought up a potential for, is there a way to create a buffer district around our two historic districts, McLaughlin and Kenema, to have some review authority, sort of the legal and kind of administrative hurdles, but and our benefits that may come with that. Mr. Edgar also brought up potentially protecting Kenema Cemetery Road. Is that brought those up as potential policy discussions? If the board wanted to either have a work session to pursue it further or not? And I put others, or any other general policy of, as he always asks, why doesn't the board do this or that? Or why don't we do this? We can create, maybe a future work session, just to say at night where we just talk about that item. I can do research and kind of present what other jurisdictions do. And then after that, the board can decide if they want to pursue whatever this issue is further, or you know, that was enough information and that's enough and they went on table pursuing, you know, color or any of these other policy issues that were brought up.
How did the color regulation discussion start? Has there been a problem?
Uh, John brought it up, is potentially what, is that something that we want to look at? So I thought if that was brought forward, a good, I could make it a good work session about when jurisdictions have done it, how they've done it, why they've done it, why jurisdictions haven't. I can do a nice policy. That may answer some of people's questions. I get that, I get that asked a lot. So, you know, a work session could kind of highlight the reasons that the board chose not to move forward with it. But the work session can kind of chew through them all. If you, if you wanted to spend an hour to talk about it, could do that. But it was brought up as a potential item. I put priority high, medium, low. I don't know the best way tonight. It may be worth it if we can go through if there's anything else wants to add. And then maybe after that, we can go through if there's anything people want to remove. And then after that, maybe we can discuss high, medium, low. I mean, however you want to, you think is the best way to come up with your near and long-term goals. This, I thought a list would be a good way to start the discussion.
Do you want everybody to vote on that?
I'm kind of
Or everybody's what they think and then you round it up.
You mean as to high, low, and medium?
Uh, or is there anything you want to add to this list before you record?
And that is, our current guideline requires that a new addition to this historic property be different. And this became a real contentious issue on the Atkinson Church. And I know that at least one of the city commissioners was, if not surprised by that guideline, was at least very resistant to it, to be polite. And the feeling was that the Atkinson Church would have been better served with an addition that more matched the existing structure than to require that it be different. And then that guided the whole. So the, the issue that we can discuss here is how we feel about that guideline.
Why, and then we can
And I did promise Jim Nacita that I would bring that up.
With that up, that's a, I see the two part. One is maybe bring Terry Richter in, who gave a kind of a good legal background about, you know, and even just talk about the preservation, the sector of your standards on preservation with that. And, and Preservation Report 14, which is actually in your package for another project.
Saw that.
You know, I think there's two things. One is kind of the literature, search, legal background, getting the breadth of understanding. And then the second part, which is where is Oregon City want to fit within that continuum? Because there's a different, there's, there's kind of two ways to look at some of these issues. Legally, you look at kind of what are all the different options that could potentially be seen as not adversely affecting a building? The other is, has the community want to craft their guidelines to maybe shift and not shift away from certain of those options within the continuum? And that's something that Oregon City can do. And I think that what the Atkinson Church, there was some confusion of, does this adversity affect the Atkinson Memorial Church? And, you know, Chievo and kind of the legal answer was no, under some of this understanding. Does this meet the Oregon City Historic Review Board's guidelines for new construction and does the board want to approve it? That could be key different answers. And so I don't know if that nuance was, was quite discussed or quite understood through the process as well.
What I didn't understand, and the reason that I say from my position on that, was that most of the things that I've seen precedent take place in cities that are adding new construction to old buildings and in historic sensitive areas, they always seem to have taken one element of the building. It didn't have to be, you know, a whole architectural mirroring, but one element from that building so as to show that it belonged in, in the community. It belonged, and maybe it wasn't even that building. It might have been a building across the street, but one element. And this is what was lapping in my estimation at the Atkinson.
And that, that's, you know, because I think they made a case that they did provide the element to their materials and their masks. So again, it was, there's many different ways to get there, but it's, the Oregon City has the ability to restrict those different options through the design guidelines. And so that education may be important. And then based on that education and maybe having a larger discussion with the McLaughlin Neighbor Association, it, an end result may or may not be a revision to the design guidelines. But I think that's an end result at the end of the process to look at.
Yeah, I didn't mean to add it today.
No, 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 yeah.
Add it to the list.
But I think that's a great concept to, to understand. And even if nothing has changed, that process of understanding is, I think, really important.
I agree.
Added.
Well, you already got two or three of them on here, didn't you?
I think maybe we're to go to the rest of the board.
Uh, do you want us to just tell you, like I said, where each of us think it should be?
Yeah, let's just go down the list and say, Ken, what, what's your priority for these, high, medium, low?
Okay, that works. And then
I don't know, is that helpful?
That would help. And then if we block those, then we automatically know that maybe we're just thought that.
Yeah, then you can just put a little check by each of them. Does that help?
Yeah, or, or we can just take a comment if, if we don't know, maybe, or maybe you have a
I think medium means you don't necessarily care and low means you, you really don't care.
I mean, you circled through what I thought was important, but, you know.
Do you want to start, Ken?
Preservation Award, I think that's high. I think that's high priority. I don't, I don't think.
But I think overall, it's preservation, high, medium, or low?
Yeah, I think it's high. Yeah.
Oh, listen, one just stood up.
Oh, I'm gonna go clear down the list. Citywide Survey is high. I mean, we're in the middle. That's pretty high. Uh, Local Preservation Grant, I'd say medium, but only because we've done a lot of the work on that already. Windows Workshop with the Repair Specialist. Remind me how that went last time. Did we get a lot of interest?
Since we've actually asked a couple to just come to a work session and just talk to the board in general, so it'd be a back and forth between the board and some specialists. It's kind of your chance to corner the specialist.
Okay, my vote's a medium. Education on SASH limiters, well, thing is, I'm uneducated about SASH limiters. So I, I really don't have a sense for how important that is or isn't. Maybe it's hugely important and I don't know. Uh, Discussion of, with the Building Division. I wonder if that's the, the discussion that we were just talking about. Which I would say is, is relatively high. And, and it'll probably be high when it comes to discussion of the city issuing a demolition permit for a designated historic structure. And we'll probably have to deal with one or two of those in the next year. So we should be right on top of that.
Um, I mean, I reject policy decisions. There's three things here. So just list each one of the things that overall color, the review, or the protecting, any of those.
Okay. Color, I, I kind of think color is low because it has never been an issue. It doesn't mean it can't become an issue, but it, it hasn't. Uh, Review of Development on Properties of Bunning Historic Districts. If we were in better economic times, that would be a hotter issue than it is right now. But we should probably deal with it before it becomes a high issue. So I'd put that at a, at a medium to high. Protecting the cemetery road. I'd say medium to low. And other, I don't know. Okay, so those are my hopes.
Um, sure. Um, Preservation Month, I think that, um, that's a great month to do a lot of stuff again. Um, like, I think maybe if you took Preservation Month and gave the awards, that month, that would be great. But the educational promotional event could probably work in with window workshops and window repair. And, um, the education on the SASH limiters. And, and then bring in the discussion with the Building Division. Even, you know, maybe some special day to have that happen and invite the public if they want to come in. So I think you could couple several things in Preservation Month and not have them scattered all over. And have it all happen. And, and maybe you'll get a bigger attendance at those window, window workshops. Color regulations, you may not need a policy for it, but if you presented it at a, at the Preservation Month as, you know, ideal colors for historical homes, have, you know, samples of, you know, I know Miller has a lot of samples of homes that they showcase with different outside borders that are acceptable. So, yeah, I think Preservation Month is high and, but I would like, try to, I would want to include a lot of these other things in Preservation. Um, the Citywide Historic Survey, that, uh, if you're having that, um, this is just going to be a one-time thing. So
And we're just, oh, by the way, we're also doing that this year.
Yeah, I think, I think that should be high, definitely. And, you know, showcase the fact that it's happening in May at the Preservation Month. So you could even work that into that. Local Preservation Grant Program, Metro, Metro. Um, and that, again, you could, you could play that up during Preservation Month and, um, you know, entice people to go out for these grants at that time. Now, timing wise, I don't know if May is going to be a good timing or not.
We don't have any money anymore, probably this year, but
Yeah, I think you could promote, promote it for the following year. So that's a high priority, but like I said, you know, blended in. And then the policy discussions, um, the development on properties affecting historic districts. I, I think that that has come up a couple of times. What with the, that House Institute on Fish Market and off Crescent Street from Tony's. It kind of needs to be talked about. But heavily involved, like the district's neighbor associations. Maybe some representative, like if you're like, you know, make some kind of a presentation at the neighborhood. So I'd say medium on that. Protecting a community cemetery, um, I think that that would be a big thing. How to do that, um, like involve, you know, police and fire and all that.
It's to be a historic preservation, potentially nominating.
Oh, I see, not, not protecting it from drug and damage.
More like nominating it.
Um, well, that's kind of a neat thing because, you know, like I said, when my son did that, you know, scalp thing, the very next day it was all destroyed. You can protect it all you want, but if you don't have the other kind of protection, it's not going to stay protected. And, uh, you know, that, these are all great and lofty goals and I really hope we, um, hope we can do this. But I think a lot of them could be handled in, in case there's a reservation month. And then it would make, you know, to showcase it that way, maybe we'd get a lot more attention.
Well, I agree with pretty much everything Cindy said. Um, I think Preservation Month is high and it would be good to incorporate the other stuff. The only thing is, it's towards the end of March, so we don't really have much time to do that. So practically speaking, I'm not sure how possible it is to, to do a lot of that in a month and a half. The Citywide Survey is high. The Local Preservation Grant Program, I think, is high. It's something that's really been the cornerstone of things that we do. And it, I think it's a really good incentive for people to have their homes designated locally. And I would, I would really like to see us try to get more money. I, 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 I am too far away from it now to know how many people applied or are interested in buying for the $3,000 we had available this year. We had so little money and I think it was because of the economy in previous years when people didn't use the money up because they just didn't have the matching funds.
Right.
And I think we can make a good case that there are people out there who want to use this money and we should just go for it. The education component, as, as Cindy said, would be good in Preservation Month if we could. I don't know how much community interest we're going to have in window repair. I would be interested in learning about SASH limiters. Myself.
Sounds like it might be the May work session. I might see if I can get our building official to come into meeting. And that might be the first step. Cause that's for that conversation.
Okay, and that would be the, so I'd say medium for SASH limiters in the Building Division. For policy discussion, I think those were all good. I guess I put them generally at medium. Color regulations, I think, is low because I would not like for us to get open that can of worms. And I think Cindy's suggestion of, um, putting out some public information about what colors would be good to use, or what kind of palette or where to go to get historical colors are better than imposing regulations.
Vicky's create a, a page on our website, on the, the list of
Um, for review of development on properties of Bunning Historic Districts. Uh, I think having a discussion about that would be good for educational purposes. But I think we need more than just talking to a neighborhood association because what we ran into with the Atkinson Church was because the individual neighbors say that they didn't get adequate advance notice, or some of them said they got no advance notice of the proposed changes, um, going on at Atkinson. And so many people frankly go to neighborhood association meetings that I think you need some sort of direct mailing to people. If you can have a meeting and discuss these things without getting noticed.
Well, this would be more of the, just the, I think the first step would be, if we're to move forward, we could vote a work session to talk about the issues relating to moving forward to that legal and procedural. And after that work session is done, do you want to still move forward?
Yeah, I, I would love to communicate on, on all of these things, but would resist imposing additional regulations unless it was something really, really necessary.
Okay. Preservation Month, that was more medium to high. Everybody says it's high. Citywide Historic Survey, high. Grant Program, high. Window Workshop, medium. SASH Limiters, medium. Discussion with the Building Division, medium. Policy Discussions, color. The only thing I think with color, because I mean, Vicky's right, you could try and enforce something, but it's not going to work. But I think something where, something on the website that shows the historic colors, I think that's what it ultimately is coming to do. And then if people come in to get a permit or they want to do an addition or something, you say, hey, uh, here's a place you can look for, yeah, color, and just as a suggestion. Uh, and then, uh, Bunning Properties and Community Cemetery, but both those is low compared to all the other stuff. So. There.
Oh, and then, I'm sorry, we didn't, Ken brought up the guidelines as a fund of policy and I, we didn't address that. Is that something you'd want to add on? That was another potential night we'll, um, the issues relating to how Oregon City sees additions to historic properties and an understanding of and this, everyone talked about it, but is that another medium as to add it to the night where we look at?
I don't know if that's so much a, a problem for the city commissioners to deal with. If they don't understand the policy, then they need to get educated.
Well, they don't
They're the ones who threw it back because they don't want to deal with it.
True, but there's also a larger discussion of, does Oregon City want to tighten the or better refine the guidelines to encourage a little more strongly than is warranted additions to be more in line with that historic architecture of a building?
I think the problem with that is you get into the same issue with paint. You get it so tight that someone doesn't fall through the funnel. You know what I mean?
Right, that, but I think what, or do you, do you, do you create, amend it so there's more opportunities to make findings for denial if there's just something that's not, I mean, I think with Atkinson, it met all the checkboxes, right? So they, the person who designed it had a very well-thought addition that, that arguably, you know, could, Preservation should say yes, this, yeah, this does not adversely affect it and meets the district interior standards and would meet the Policy Bulletin 14. But it doesn't mean necessarily that Oregon City needed to do it to prove it. But does the design guidelines for new construction need to, need better, is policy to allow Oregon City the opportunity to say, even though you checked the box, it doesn't necessarily need to, we had something at night for this.
But that brings up a whole other argument. Oh, you've got these standards, you're not adhering to them because you don't like it and the neighbors don't like it and you're not going to prove it.
Well, I think that you're working words here too, because they're not standards, they're guidelines. When you call them guidelines, then that, then you can always color outside the lines. You can always say, these are just guidelines.
I think you're both right.
Yeah. Sure, you know, and it's like doing this.
And, and also, you know, what we could talk about is, is nancy really an element or is it a sub-element? I'm not sure.
I just, we're not the only city that deals with this. I mean, this is a, naturally, how does a community grapple with additions to historic buildings? And there could be a good work session to just talk about that and where we find ourselves and where we want to fit.
I, I would like education on that because my garage was added before, before I ever got on this board. And, um, I love my garage. I think it matches my house pretty darn well. And oftentimes people don't know that it's new garage and that's fine with me. Um, so I don't really understand how it is different or to what extent it had to be different because that was before I got involved in this kind of stuff. So there seems to be quite a big continuum here.
Well, and accessory buildings are different than additions. I mean, there, there's clearly a, a different thought process from accessory buildings than additions. I would look, I know, I mean, I know your addition is, is new because I, you can tell from this size of it, it would never have been probably that big. But, but that's my opinion, I looking at it. So it's kind of these, they don't write, they don't write answers, I guess, for this, this content. And so, yeah, an education that would be, I think, beneficial.
But even as Preservation, I've read this several times over the years and people have heard you this.
Yeah.
It's like
It's like it's a framework and then as a community, you figure out where to fit in the framework. But, um, yeah, okay. Well, it sounds as if it's something that people could pursue as an education, I think.
Uh, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, go ahead. Yeah. Yeah, you bet. You betcha.
There's a, there's a possibility of something positive could happen downtown Oregon City. But right now, there's no design, truly historic design review or design guidelines so much. We call it a historic mainstream. And, but when we look at it, it's not within a historic district. It's, it's, uh, but when we get into trying to do something like some of the, the real cities have done that have tried to create a, a, a design philosophy for their, their that have tried to create a, a design philosophy for their, their development. We have something where, as an example to me, I always looked at the, when they redid the Chevron station down there and they went with the old bricks and to me and I thought, well, here we have the courthouse and the courthouse people come in and put together this really, I think, very appropriate add-on to the courthouse. And they do it in design compatibility, so that it's complimentary. And, and I look at, as an example, if we were to do some residential housing that were to go in there, some major developments that were to go in there or were to do a big parking lot or a big building, some different types of them. What is appropriate when we're trying to maintain kind of this image of a historic Main Street? And, and, and I, it's kind of, to me, it's like I'm thinking, wow, wouldn't it be nice if some of this, we had some type where they could come to the district review board? Because right now, it's, it goes to a primary desk.
But I don't know where our purview is Main Street.
Well, and again, and I, my thinking is having it the way it is is not right. And we've got to do something better because I think we can lose a critical part of what is, we're selling.
I agree.
And, and how we do it is something, and it's kind of like, this is just to start a discussion about what could we do, what is appropriate? So as if we actually do something smarter and, and the discussion is out there where people are, are hooting about it because maybe this is the discussion where you guys are saying, hey, maybe what we aren't doing is not right. But maybe this is a city commission, maybe this is the planning commission, you know, but it's, it's the combined of all. But I think in the long haul, I would love to see it kind of come back to you guys.
You're proposing that you want the downtown district to be in a historic district.
I wanted to give a historic review, I want a design review.
Just real briefly, I can give a long background of why downtown is on a historic district, but it did tie to go through a local historic district in the nineties and was shot, shot down to eleventh hour. So there's a long history of that. We do have lots of new owners. You know, it's always been on the larger discussion is if downtown ever wants to go for a national registration district, that's really a discussion of property owners downtown if they want to move forward. I know Main Street, Oregon City, and Light Street have things planned that know that that's an option. The one thing that district review should not do or should not do, I've addressed this once by district preservation office, is seventeen forty, you're enabling or admitts for district review for really historically designated structures. So the district review board really not set up to, you're not a district district, a downtown design review board. In that aspect, you know, what the district review board could do is that they could add, you know, the advisory body to help, you know, a larger Main Street, you know, vision, the district review board can be part of that. But really, I need to put that, no one owns downtown. You know, there's no great vision for downtown because it is not a historic district. And right now, all it has is some design review guidelines anywhere else in the city. Really the next step of the city commission or the Main Street Oregon City, if they want to move forward, the community members to create a separate identity for downtown. Because unless it's a historic district, it's really not the curfew and board to review. But they can be part in an advisory role for that vision.
And I know, I was on the design committee for Main Street for some time and they have design guidelines that they worked pretty hard on. And I know when there are downtown property owners who, if they want advice on their building, Christine is here and is very good about giving advice. And Main Street has come such a long way in the last few years because people understand it. And I think the thought of trying to put any more regulations on those people at this point just is, to me, isn't a good idea.
The way a national register's, this has happened nowadays, it has to come from the community.
And I would, I never had thought of it being a national register district.
Because it can't be a local district, just to say.
It can be a conservation district.
No, but that, that process really isn't, based on state statutes, with the way, what the legislature did with owner consent in the nineties, local historic districts really aren't an option. So you pretty much are at a national register district or individually.
And also, since now there was the vote for the EID downtown, I, I just think over time with education, it's going to continue to get better. And I just, I guess I don't think that we need to add to us, maybe as in advisory capacity, if somebody actually really wants.
Well, as an example, I saw the plans that were put forth by the metro design group for the apartment, some of the facilities they locked by Kentucky Fried Chicken. I thought the building that was, that the design was atrocious and would be not complimentary to historic downtown Oregon City. And yet I saw people crave about it because they kind of got into the thing and I thought to myself, oh my God, this would be crap from, from, from Oregon City and its historic, what is trying to sell. But, and so here we have downtown Main Street, we have all these people and what they were, what they were dropping on board and it was amazingly wrong.
And unfortunately, we.
We could talk about this all night, but we've got to keep rolling it. That's a great issue, it's a big issue, you could talk all night, but, you know, it's all, what you're saying is great. It's just, it's a big thing, but you've got to keep rolling it.
I think I have the list and I can, I'll recreate kind of that order. I think Vicky is correct, May is coming up quickly. What I will be doing is we'll be looking at the preservation award and I have a recommendation that, you know, we can, we can discuss later, but the, and I'll maybe look at some options for promotional events. What we generally do, the first city commission hearing of the month for May, we do the proclamation and award, the award that night. So whatever the first May meeting, the city commission.
You've got to discuss who that is, who you're thinking about, but you have to kind of keep that quiet.
Right, right, it's not here, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. But just to give you a heads up what's happening in May, so that's the proclamation and the award at the May city, well, district review board meeting, which is at the end of the month because it's in this educational. So we could, whatever we decide for the May meeting for the district review board, we can announce it at the city commission meeting, which is at the first of the month.
Got you.
So I think that's, I think I have those kind of two dates for May.
Okay, let's quickly go over to our matinee, how structural reports.
For people who didn't know, the city hired Fred Pilatus, District Report for our matinee. It was presented last month, we get it back to the end of this little work session. Scott Archer and Denise Kai are away this week, so they wanted to come tonight. But what they have promised to do within April meeting, they'd like to actually have the engineer to speak with you to about the next step. So I'm definitely not experienced in this report, but I wanted to get it out and get a link so you had it.
Where's the money in your promise for that, Jill?
Um, as far as I know. The, so the technical aspects, you can talk to the engineer and hopefully by then the city commission will have absorbed this report and given direction to Scott Archer about some of the next steps. I did want to let you know that I worked with Scott and Denise last week and I actually formally applied for the district commission of Oregon to name our matinee house as a most dangerous building, or most threatened building. So that will hopefully be a proactive process where we can work with the district commission of Oregon to help us be a partner. They have some skills they can help us with, trying to bring heavy morality with the presidential of Oregon in as a partner. And think that just us being it and us being the applicant is kind of going that first step to show that we are supportive of moving forward to save it. So I did turn that in on Monday. And so when you, if you see a link coming up next month, we applied to be on that list. One of Oregon's.
I, I have some tiny responsibilities since our, you know, in this financial, because of our inspector's allowing. When they were putting in all these engineering changes.
Both are all good questions and I don't know the answer. So unfortunately, with the book there, our matinee house, the district review board is an equal partner, but until we understand what the city commission wants to do with regards to funding, I don't have much, I don't have much to give back to this board. I'm hoping that I can start with district of Oregon and working with Scott Archer, Denise Kai, we can start looking at more strategic planning about the steps. I think that's when I can kind of bring the district review board in. More at this point with the structural engineers report, I don't have a lot other than just reporting back what's been found.
Okay. Well, I'll make the motion that we receive the structural engineers evaluation report and we'll wait for direction from the city.
I don't think you have to make a motion to them.
Can I ask you a question? This is, unless you want to hit this item C real quick.
The item four, I just want to give you an update. I just received the draft of all fifteen hundred odd buildings. I haven't seen it yet, it just got uploaded today. I'm going to be working with the applicant on a map just to map integrity and age so we can get a better understanding of where the clusters are. She's not finding really intact clusters, so that's one answer we've, we've received already. Once I get it, other than a PDF form, it'll be online and you'll receive an email from me probably next week or two.
Okay. The thing I need to bring up is, and I'm curious, being on a different board, doing the same thing for West Lynn, I received this. Two thousand annual verified state living public interest.
Well, yeah.
Shouldn't we all be doing this for this board?
You should.
So we should be dealing with this.
I have to sue Nancy I that you have not received. I look, you've been hearing what's been going on the last couple of years, but the legislature has requiring not only that city commissions and city councils, but also appointed boards, planning commissions, district review boards to disclose their financial interests. And we should be sending, you should be getting that now. And so I will let Nancy I know because you are treated the same as a planning commission and you should be disclosing any issue, conflict of interest you have on that, on that.
Yeah, so I, because we've never talked about it, so that's all I, anybody else have anything else before we close this? Okay, we're a little, oh, yeah, we're a little ager, so.